All right, good morning. Welcome to our Board of Supervisors meeting for October 25th, 2016. We are going to adjourn into closed session. Are there any public comments? Nope, thank you. So we are now adjourning into closed session.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Do we know where Supervisor Wright is? Is he ill or not coming in?
I haven't had any...
Okay, thank you.
No, they're not here. We're going to continue that.
Yeah.
You want me to pull it? Okay, yeah, let me do that.
All right. Good morning. Welcome to our October 25th, 2016 Calaveras County Board of Supervisors regular meeting. And first, I'd like to report out on our closed sessions this morning and fix the... First, I have to fix the live video feed here so we won't have any noise. On closed session agenda, we had pursuant to government code, section 54956.9d1, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, two cases, County of Calaveras versus Ross Thornton at Al... and Alvarado Superior Court, case number SC20150086, Dennis Ponte versus County of Calaveras, Calaveras County, Superior Court, case number 12CV38597, county council, board action. And I'd like to mention also that Supervisor Ponte recused herself from this, and there was no action taken. Also, on our number three on the agenda is public employment pursuant to government code, section 54957b1, environmental management administrator, APCO, board action, no action taken, and public employee dismissal release pursuant to government code 54957b1, board action, and this is item number four, and there was also no action taken on that. So with that, if you can, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah. So we're going to go into recognition and acknowledgements.
Board Chair, I'm going to ask that number five, adopt a proclamation recognizing local high school students for attending American Legion Boys and Girls State be continued to the next meeting. I'll take responsibility for that. I should have given them more notice to be here, and it's a great group, and I'd like to have them here and give it to them.
That sounds good.
Could we have a motion and a second for that and a vote?
Yes.
I move that we continue number five until our next board meeting.
All right, second. Can I have a public comment on that, please? Okay, so I have a motion by Supervisor Kearney, a second by Supervisor Wright. All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed?
Thank you.
So we have number six.
Number six. Sorry.
That's all right. You can delay it as much as you'd like.
Proclamation recognizing Jason Bateser for his 14 years of outstanding service with Calaveras County.
Okay. How do we make this go slow? All right, so we have a proclamation that actually was, you know, there was quite a few staff members had a piece of it. So I'll let Mr. Mock go ahead and start.
The proclamation recognizes Jason S. Bateser for his 14 years of outstanding service with Calaveras County. Whereas on August 19th, 43 AD, Octavian, later known as Augustus, compelled the Roman Senate to elect him counsel. And whereas on August 19th, 1399, King Richard II of England surrenders to his cousin Henry, Jason's first son's name. And whereas on August 19th, 1591, French King Henri, which is Henry IV, same name as Jason's first son, but different spelling, occupied Rouen. And whereas on August 19th, 2002, Jason Bateser joined Calaveras County as a registered environmental health specialist and initiated an exemplary and award-winning certified Unified Program Agency, or COOPA, program from its inception.
And whereas on February 13th, 2007, Jason received... Is that the one you just read? Yeah. Received Certified Program Agency Individual Award from California COOPA Forum Board in front of 1,100-plus individuals at the 2007 Annual COOPA Conference, the state-recognized award that was given to only one individual per year. And whereas Jason served as Chair of the statewide California COOPA Forum Board in 2011, 2012. And whereas on January 5th, 2008, Jason was appointed by the Board of Supervisors as manager of Environmental Health Department, and on July 25th, 2015, was appointed by the Board of... as the Environmental Management Agency Administrator and Air Pollution Control Officer. And whereas when the Butte Fire occurred in September of 2015, Jason immediately worked with state agencies, including CalOES and CalRecycle, the California Conference of Directors of Environmental Health, CCDEH, as well as others to secure mutual aid as far away as Los Angeles County to evaluate properties before the embers cooled in the burn area. And whereas Jason further coordinated efforts with private enterprises in the removal of debris under the Butte Fire Disaster Debris Removal Program. And whereas in September of 2016, Jason was successful in bringing home a Calaveras County the coveted excellence in environmental health award as voted on by members of CCDEH for the Butte Fire response and recovery. Now therefore, be proclaimed, the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors hereby recognizes Jason S. Bateser for 14 years of outstanding service to Calaveras County. And this is just, we couldn't put it all on one proclamation, so... Can I have a motion by the board, please?
So moved. Second.
Okay, so I have a motion by Supervisor Kearney and a second by Supervisor Wright. Can I have a public comment, please? No public comment? Okay, I can comment. You know, when Jason first told me, or I found out that he was leaving, I can only think back since I've only known him for four years. And then when he came into his position as director over there, department head, immediately, soon after, he was thrown into the Butte Fire situation. And I can tell you that I am so happy he was here for that because Jason was solidly for our community and a very good communicator with all of us at the board. I can only imagine, if he didn't take action as quickly as he did, what kind of results we would be seeing in our reservoirs, actually, the state reservoirs, right now because of all of the hazardous debris that were out there because there were many, many, many properties with burnt homes, but also a lot of other stuff, including, you know, I remember one property had 55 truckloads of debris hauled out, just one property. So I think it was really important that we did that to be able to protect our watershed, our environment, and I can't imagine anybody else taking it on as he did. And he did it with a smile, you know? He was good with people. He was concerned with our citizens, and he was a great communicator with administrative administration and the Board of Supervisors. And that's all, you know, it's every bit all we can ask. So when I first heard that he was leaving, I remember sitting here, and I didn't know until I heard it from everywhere else. All I could say is, you know, it was hard for me to fight back my emotions on that because of the relationship I think that we've developed over the past couple of years. And so I think very highly of this, of Jason. So thank you, and here's your proclamation. That should be pretty fun to hang on the wall there.
I will. A lot of history here. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your service.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairs, claps. We need a vote.
Good job. Thank you.
Paul Taylor. Aye. Opposed?
Thank you.
Actually, I should have opposed.
This is your opportunity.
Yeah.
Okay, from here, we'll be moving into public comment. So any item of interest to the public that is within the subject of material restriction of the board and is not posted on consent or regular agendas may be addressed during the public comment period. California law prohibits the board from taking action on any matter which is not posted on the agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the Board of Supervisors. If public comment is completed before the 30-minute allotted time period, the board may immediately move to the regular agenda. If public comment is not completed during the allotted time period, it will be continued at the conclusion of the consent agenda in order to provide opportunity for the remainder of comments to be heard. And this morning, we have three-minute public comments. So who would like to be first?
I'm the president of the El Rancho Loma Serena Homeowners Association. This association consists of 148 parcels of land committed by its governing documents to residential purposes only. The association has documented marijuana grows of commercial scale on at least 11 lots within its boundaries. The association is aware that three of these grows are not registered with the county. In other words, these grows are clearly in violation of the county's ordinance and a public nuisance, and I'd be happy to provide the APN numbers for these parcels if requested. Each of the 11 grows within our association violates our governing documents, which require that lots be used for residential purposes only and for no purpose that violates state, federal, or local law. The association's board has taken action against these lot owners, including the imposition of heavy daily fines designed to discourage their commercial cultivation of marijuana within the association. However, the association lacks the authority to physically remove these grows. We have been patiently waiting through an entire growing season for the county to exercise its authority against these grows, which clearly violate the county's own rules. Now, as the growing season draws to an end, these unregistered growers will soon be harvesting and selling their crops, which will simply provide them with additional monetary resources with which they can buy up additional properties, lawyer up, and fight the association's efforts to drive them out. I come before this board this morning on behalf of the association to express our collective dismay at the county's failure to take action against the marijuana growers within our association who are clearly in violation of the county's ordinance. This lack of enforcement undermines our confidence in the county's oversight of marijuana cultivation in general.
30 seconds.
And encourages these growers who would flaunt not only our association's governing documents, the county ordinances, and state law as well. We urgently request that the county take immediate action against these unregistered growers and restore to our community some faith that the rule of law still prevails in this county. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sandy Maitreid here before you again to talk cannabis. While we await election results on Measures C and D, we continue to have the urgency ordinance as our rule of law. I stand before you today asking why that law is not being enforced in areas that are fairly simple and very straightforward. I also live in El Rancho Loma Serena and remain a member of the HOA Board of Directors. Those parcels within the association who have registered under the urgency ordinance, as Mr. Baldrich stated, are being addressed by the association for violating our Declaration of Restrictions. It's a long and laborious process, but we'll get there even in the face of litigation. Those parcels within the association who have not registered are also being addressed, and we have requested the county... We have requested a county assistance with these and have failed to receive it. As stated, El Rancho Loma Serena has three non-registered, non-compliant cultivators who have chosen to abstain from the rule of law in Calaveras County. By virtue of their size, they fall into the definition of commercial cultivator. These locations have been brought to code enforcement's attention as well as law enforcement several times and over a period of months. Nothing has happened. These individuals continue to grow. One even went so far as to admit their lack of county compliance in writing to the HOA Board. This communication, which I can forward to you if you're interested in seeing it, was shared with another resource in the county. When I personally followed up with them, I was told simply, "These things take time." Several months later, the clock is still ticking. Coupled with these violators, our HOA has had pets injured or killed by dogs running at large who are intended to protect farms. Two cultivators exceed the dog's county limits of three, and one advertises themselves as a kennel without a license here in this county. As all of you know, I did not start out supporting regulated cannabis in Calaveras. I came to that place over time as a result of believing regulation would bring funding for enforcement. It did. However, it seems that enforcement has been somewhat selective.
30 seconds.
I've seen clear violations ignored, and I reiterate, simply been told, "These things take time." It might be time to spend some of the funds on contract staff augmentation to ensure, at the very least, code enforcement is properly supported, and the county gets their site inspections done in an expedited manner. Does the board have any questions of me? Thank you for your time.
Sandy?
Yes.
Would you forward that information to the board clerk?
I will.
And the gentleman that spoke earlier, would you forward that information to the board clerk?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I also live in El Rancho Loma Serena. My name is Doug Beard. Good morning, Supervisors. I'm not going to be as eloquent as my predecessors. I think it's time for a little bit of blunt talk. It appears nothing is being done on a rather large group of people. Now, it appears to me that there's a large group of people in the county, not individuals, but different organizations, that aren't getting anything done, and my taxes support that, and I'm unhappy about it. Now, either they're leaderless, or they have processes that impede the actual output of any work. Based on just canceling several hundred code compliance complaints a few months ago, I'd say it may be a process thing. To be clear, let's take two recent code cases. On March 25th, this was released to the code compliance people. A garage was added tied to an existing house without a foundation. A clear violation. It's still there. It doesn't appear that anything has happened. On June 13th, they were reported... Another report was done of two structures that were built with no permits, large structures. Recently, it's been confirmed independently that people are living in them. Again, nothing's been done. To me, there doesn't seem to be anything that's actually being done with any of these complaints. How is the process in the way of completing anything? How is it? I don't know. Or is there some systemic problem, like everybody's worried about covering themselves because of something they did? I don't know. I don't care. I just want the problem fixed. When the public can't know how something works, it's a problem. And in this area, I can't get a workflow description or even a cognizant acceptance of, "Oh, yeah, well, we take care of it."
30 seconds.
Well, that's no good. I believe it's why it doesn't... Nothing seems to work is, there's no documented process. You can't hand somebody, like a taxpayer, "Here, this is how you do it. This is how we do it." That's not possible. Nobody has that. So I would expect that you people will figure out what it is that's imposing, impeding these processes and get them fixed. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Good morning. My name is Michael Falvey. I live in Mountain Ranch. I usually shoot from the hip, but this time, I'm going to read what I have to say so I get it all across. My comments are in reference to the process for those appealing denials for a commercial cannabis growing permit. First off, I wish to commend the Planning Commission, Mr. Maurer and his staff for their fine and complete work in addressing many questionable permits. I particularly commend them for following the letter of the law in reference to the urgency ordinance. Speaking of the urgency ordinance, let me say this. I was here for around 10 or 11 hours that day in May when the vote was held whether or not to invoke the proposed ordinance. At that time, there were hours and hours of public comment, as you well know. I would venture a conservative estimate of a percentage of 80% of the speakers who spoke in favor of the proposed ordinance were, in fact, marijuana cultivators. You know how packed the chamber were in here and outside? It was packed by representatives of the growing commission, growing community, and you will recall the standing ovation you received from the growers upon your approval of the urgency ordinance. They were truly happy with your vote and greatly appreciated it. Since the permit process started, there have been quite a few denials. Of course, the people denied have appealed to the Planning Commission. I have been to two meetings of the commission where they addressed the denials and the appeals. As a person with what I would describe as a fair bit of common sense and one who could mostly see through the haze of confusion, I must say it is stupefying to me what appealers have come up with in their way of reasons... The reasons their appeals should be upheld. Lies, false evidence, photos of things that don't exist, forgery, you name it. Most of them are out-and-out lies. So the appeals denied, they played a game, and the appeals refused. I assume that's the last resort. Now, my point as to why I'm making this statement. The growing community wanted, though I will say demanded, that the urgency ordinance be passed. So that is what is in effect to legislative growers for now, anyways. It is incumbent upon you that unless an appealer can come up with truthful and documentable evidence that they deserve to be granted a permit to operate a commercial marijuana operation, and the appeal upheld...
30 seconds.
...year responsibly to the citizens of Calaveras County, you must uphold the Planning Commission denials. As far as I know, so far, one person has had what seems to be a good argument against a denial. I believe he was up for review and will go in front of you or the Planning Commission. As far as the rest I have seen, there is no way that any of those appeals should be upheld. I speak because my supervisor from District 2 has said a denied grower had good, and I quote, "intent" in reference to his out-of-compliance grow. So does that mean if a grower intends to honor 22,000 square foot designation but accidentally claims 44,000 square feet, he should be forgiven? No.
Mike? That was it? Thanks.
Okay.
Thank you.
I would appreciate it, Board, and specifically my supervisor, follow the letter of the law on the urgency ordinance.
Thank you, Mike. Any other public comments? Okay, let's move on to our regular agenda.
Number eight is from Information Technology to approve total project funding of $109,650 for upgraded data backup and recovery environment for county data centers, including quotes of $80,024.63 to SigmaNet, $12,586 to E+ and $7,795 to Quest.
Good morning, Supervisors. Stan Moore from Information Technology, here to discuss one of the projects that we had included in the infrastructure upgrades in the Teter Fund that has been set up for that. This is an improvement to the... An upgrade and improvement to the equipment and software that we use to make copies, to make backups of data, and to be able to recover should there be a need to recover with that data. Currently, we back up some data to disk. A lot of our backup data is done to tape. This environment will use much more of a disk-to-disk, which is a more efficient fashion. It's a faster fashion, and it is a higher-quality fashion. It gives us better ability to recover should there be a need to recover. We talked a little bit about this in previous sessions, that this will give us a redundant backup process. We've got two large data centers in the county, the main data center and the sheriff's office data center. Each one will back... Will have two instances. Each one will back up data for that data center and then send a mirrored version of it to the other data center. This gives us the ability, should we have a catastrophic failure of our backup equipment in order to be able to recover. So we've got improved backup and recovery capabilities as a result of this. We believe that the investment is a... Will cover us for five years. That is based on the type of data and the amount of data that is currently backed up. Should there be changes in the type of data that is backed up, that may... We may need more money as we go forward. The types of data that would cause us to overrun our review projection is if we got into backing up video and a lot of images that take up a lot more data. Other than that, we believe that this will last for five years. The components that were mentioned here have all been... The components that, that were mentioned here have, have all been competitively bid. There's another roughly $10,000 for professional services, licenses for the servers, and a slight contingency. Do we have any questions?
Any questions from the board?
Just to confirm that this was a budgeted item, and it's coming out of the Teter Fund, correct?
Yes, thank you. It is. It is coming out.
Okay. Any public comments? All right.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second the motion? Second motion by Supervisor Ponte, second by Supervisor Kearney. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Stan.
Thank you.
Item nine is from the Assessor's Office to adopt the resolution authorizing the board chair to sign the application for open space subvention payment of $139,964.86 from the state of California under the Open Space Subvention Act.
Mr. Chairman, Honorable Members of the Board, Leslie Davis, County Assessor, this is an annual request for your authorization to submit the open space subvention report to the Department of Conservation. I would simply point out that although the price tag on that's a shade under $140,000, you will not see a dime of it. Even if the state were to fund this program, which they have not funded for the last eight years, we owe the state in excess of $300,000. So, any payment that might come to us, should the state fund it, would be used to pay back that amount. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. This is an annual request. You see me every October.
Question? How, is this more or less than last year, say?
It's ever so slightly more.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Any public comments?
Yeah. House of Taxpayer Association, would it be possible to elaborate about the $300,000 that we owe?
Certainly, Mr. Chair, members of the board, about 10 years ago now, the Department of Conservation audited the Williamson Act Subvention Program of Calaveras County. At that time, they discovered some problems with the way the county had been reporting prime land versus non-prime agricultural land. And it was their determination that because of those historical problems, the county owed $313,543.44 for overpayments in prior years. I would point out, they could only go back four years, statute of limitation we had been accumulating. I have a lot over the 20 years preceding that audit.
That answer your question?
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Supervisor Wright, second by Supervisor Ponte. All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 10 is from Public Works to adopt a resolution authorizing the board chair to execute a professional services agreement for construction engineering for the railroad flat road over Esperanza Creek Bridge project between Calaveras County and Quincy Engineering Incorporated, for an amount not to exceed $425,500, and for a term to expire December 31st, 2017.
Thank you. Jeff Krovitz, Public Works Director. As you may recall, at the last board meeting, you approved a construction contract to KWMerson for the replacement of the railroad flat bridge on Railroad Flat Road, crossing Esperanza Creek near the Ware Guard intersection. This item in front of you is a construction management, construction observation, construction reporting contract with Quincy Engineering to meet both state and federal standards required of our funding for this project. We went through a competitive bid, and the Quincy team was ranked the highest. And so, we've negotiated through them, and what's in front of you is a contract for that construction support, construction management services.
Any questions from the board? Any public comments or questions? All right. Any other motion, please? I'll make a motion to approve. Motion by Supervisor Wright.
I'll second.
Second by Supervisor Ponte. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Item 11 is from the Administrative Office to adopt a resolution approving the form of and authorizing the execution and delivery of the ground lease, the facilities lease, the trust agreement, the certificate purchase agreement, and the continuing disclosure certificate, approving the form of and authorizing the execution and distribution of the official statement, authorizing the sale of the 2016 refunding certificates of participation, and authorizing certain additional actions.
This item was previously brought to the board in a presentation, a couple of meetings back, and the board gave direction to Administrative Office to move forward with the resolutions. So, essentially, this is the item that will actually enact what the board gave direction for, and we're requesting approval of the resolution therefore.
All right. Any board comments? Any public comments on this item? Okay. Any other motion, please?
So moved.
Motion by Supervisor Kearney.
I'll second.
Second by Supervisor Ponte. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Item 12 is from the Administrative Office to adopt a resolution authorizing the sale and issuance of refunding bonds and related actions.
Similar to the previous item, once again, this was covered during the same presentation to the board. And again, the board gave direction to the Administrative Office to move forward on this item, and, and this resolution will therefore make this official, and we're requesting approval of this resolution.
All right. Board comments? None?
Yep.
Public comments? Any other motion, please?
So moved.
Motion by Supervisor Kearney.
Second.
Second by Supervisor Olivera. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Number 13.
Number 13 is an item from Public Works authorize the board chair to execute a First Amendment to the professional services agreement between Calaveras County and Tetra Tech Incorporated for arboricultural and tree removal monitoring services due to the but fire incident for an additional amount not to exceed $1,588,488, without modification to the existing term ending June 30th, 2018.
Thank you. Jeff Krovitz, Public Works. As the board may recall, in June of this year, we awarded a contract to Tetra Tech for arborist services. At the same time, we were pushing ahead with our partners at Cal OES and FEMA for environmental clearance for burn tree removal on public rights of way, or county maintained roads, as well as adjacent private property parcels with dead trees that have the possibility of falling onto public, publicly maintained roads. As we went through the federal environmental clearance process, there was discussion and consultation with a number of state agencies. One of the consultations was for endangered species with United States Fish and Wildlife Service. The United States Fish and Wildlife Service identified three endangered species, two botanical, one amphibious, that needed monitoring during tree removal activities in order to protect habitat. We were given a series of mitigation and monitoring protocols that requires the presence on site during tree removal of a certified professional with the ability to recognize endangered species, endangered species habitat, and affect protocols that would protect those habitats during the construction activities. Additionally, there was a federal consultation under Section 106 of NEPA for cultural resources, reaching out to some of our local Native Americans as subject matter experts, identified a number of sites of concern of cultural resources, and also made recommendations for cultural resources monitoring and potential mitigation if sites are disturbed during tree removal activities. This contract amendment allows us to place professionals under our arbor, our currently existing arborist contract, for those monitoring and mitigation activities during construction to meet federal guidelines. Also contained within this amendment are professionals for historic or archaeological resources. We have, there have been identified through federal research between 10 and 20 potential historic sites that would be sites with developments such as old mines, old buildings, greater than 50 years old, that will need additional monitoring during construction to make sure that we are not disturbing these historic resources. As we do not know, Public Works at this time, the specifics of what those mitigations and monitorings are for the historic or archaeological, we've put them in here as generic, and based upon experience that Tetra Tech has on similar historic projects, have budgeted monies within this contract amendment to cover those activities, should they be required through SHIPO and FEMA in the environmental clearance for the removal of hazardous trees. So, it appears to be a large dollar amendment in compared to the original contract, however, it is still the same subject and same work of the original contract. We have provided copies of this amendment to our partners at Cal OES and FEMA without objection, and so we are asking for board approval of this contract amendment to put ourselves in a position to begin work immediately upon receiving environmental clearance. Questions?
Questions?
Questions. Is this going to be required of, of SHIPO at some point, do you think, down the line, that we have these folks on board with us?
There has been some consultation between FEMA, the environmental branch, and SHIPO, the State Historic Preservation Office, on the subject matter of this project, hazardous tree removal, but fire. And there has been response that yes, there will likely be some monitoring required. The only question that I, that we have is, will the monitoring be required of historians or archaeologists provided through SHIPO, or will our contractor provide that particular expertise? We wanted to cover all bases and not have to come back to board once we get these mitigations to further delay the removal of these trees. So, that's why we have added it here as a look-ahead feature.
Okay. And then, you know, a lot of the work has happened now with Tetra in regards to identifying the trees and what's coming down and that sort of thing. This contract allows them to be present during the takedown of trees?
They are already required, and the original contract had them present not only at the takedown of the trees, but the loading of the trees on the truck, and the transport of the trees to the debris management sites, as well as counting the trees arriving at the debris management sites, and then also monitoring the disposition of that debris material. So, that was part of the original contract with Tetra Tech. And so, the only thing that we've really added with this amendment is federal NEPA monitoring and potential mitigation to protect either endangered species, cultural resources, or historic resources that we may run into.
And any idea how Tetra Tech will hire folks for this?
They've already reached out to the Professional Services Committee and identified professional, professionals. One of the conditions of approval from U.S. Fish and Wildlife is that the service, U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, would have approval authority based on resumes submitted. And I believe that to date, 18 resumes have been submitted and 17 have been approved.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other board comments? All right. Any public comments? Okay. Any other motion?
So moved.
Motion by Supervisor Olivera.
Second.
Second by Supervisor Wright. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 14.
Item 14 is from the Planning Department to deny appeal 2016-1084, and uphold the Planning Commission decision to deny appeal 2016-1040 of the Planning Director's decision to deny commercial cannabis registration 2016-124.
Good morning. Gina Cathon, County Planning. You have before you an appeal of a Planning Commission, or, yeah, Planning Commission decision to deny an appeal of the Planning Director's determination to deny a cannabis Mr. Emin applied for a commercial cannabis registration. His packet was, in our opinion, near perfect. He had, his application was verified by the department as being in compliance with the ordinance. In addition, he had submitted additional documentation that was required for his certificate of registration, such as a state seller's permit, county business license, in addition to a, in addition to the permit necessary for waste discharge through the Water Quality Control Board. We have yet to verify on site whether or not the, the actual site is in compliance, but according to all aerial photos, I would have no doubt that he would probably be in compliance, based on our conversations, in addition to what we can see in the aerial photography. The problem is, is that Mr. Emin went to do his background check through the county sheriff's office, and while filling out his register, his questionnaire, failed to disclose an arrest. The arrest did not result in disqualifying factors. It was actually dismissed, and there was no conviction. However, the sheriff's office disqualified his questionnaire and disqualified his background check. So, therefore, we denied the registration, and he has appealed that decision to you today.
Board comments?
There's also a notation in here that the applicant has a history of local sanctions, fines, and penalties. Is that part of the process? Item 15A, number two.
In the report.
If I'm reading correctly.
14.
Find the applicant cultivation has convicted of felony, Mr. Mayor.
Those were, those were simply the, the sections that we cited him under for failure to disclose, and the arrest, basically, in a nutshell, didn't complete the questionnaire as requested. So, the, the application, much like filling an application out incompletely, the questionnaire was not filled out accurately.
So, that's what, that item 15A, number two?
Yes.
Saying that the application wasn't complete?
History of local sanctions, fines, penalties, and violations of local ordinance. Yes.
Any other board discussion? Okay. So, now we'll go to the appellate.
When I came to this county, I, I came with the intention to respect every regulation that was required for me, and I did.
Pardon me, sir. Could I ask you to do me a favor?
Yes, sir.
Pull the microphone just a little closer to you.
Yes, sir. When I, when I came here, I came with the intention to follow every rule and regulation that was required of me, and I have. When I filled out the application, the questionnaire had stated a question, and I can read it to you. List any and all arrests or formal charges with or without disposition for any criminal offenses within the U.S. or any other country. I take responsibility for misunderstanding that question, but there's two, there's two things in this question that they wanted to list. The second thing didn't require me to, and I'm sorry, I'm, I'm really nervous right now. Sorry.
The, question one has two questions. The first one is to list any and all, all arrests or formal charges with or without disposition for any criminal offenses within the U.S. or any other country. The first one is to list any and all, all arrests or formal charges with or without disposition. He did not understand what disposition means. Even after looking up the definition, we still didn't understand what disposition means in terms of this question. The second part is asking for any criminal offenses. So in context of criminal, criminal offenses, that doesn't apply to him because he doesn't have any criminal misdemeanors or felonies. He was arrested in his 20s for a fight, went to court, it was dismissed. That's the only time he's ever been arrested, and he's, he's never even been pulled over for a traffic violation.
Mr. Chair, could I identify the speaker? Are you counsel?
I'm sorry, I'm Yasmin. My name is Yasmin, I'm his wife.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Sorry about that. I wasn't expecting to take over for him.
I thought you might have been counsel.
No, no. So just so you guys understand where he's coming from, he had wrote "not applicable." He didn't say no. He didn't get arrested. He didn't say yes either. That, to me, implies that he just didn't understand the question.
Do you want to talk about your background check, your recent background check?
Yeah. I was initially accepted to Samuel Merritt University's nursing program, and with that, you have to submit a background check. And I have to complete a background check here, if you guys want to take a look at it. Can I pass it to you guys? Would that be okay?
No. You can show it to us, but it's not going to apply here.
Okay, that's fine. Well, I completed a background check and, and I, I passed it, and I've, I've, the last four and a half years, I've been working as a nursing assistant for St. Rose Hospital in the intensive care unit. I've passed many backgrounds before, and I've never came across a question like that. In 17.95.165 of the ordinance, it describes what the disqualification is according to your ordinance. It says here that all applicants for a commercial medical cannabis cultivation site shall submit fingerprints and be subjected to criminal background checks conducted by the Calaveras County Sheriff's. And it says, "The registration may be denied or invalidated if the sheriff finds that the applicant for the cultivation site has been convicted of any felony or misdemeanor he deems to be reasonably related to the qualifications, functions, responsibilities, or duties expected of an applicant for the type of registration he or she is applying for."
Does he have a bad history?
Yeah, even if they have a misdemeanor or felony, they can still hand out a permit. I don't have any criminal records. I've had one incident my whole life, and since then, I've stayed away from any kind of trouble. I've stayed away from any kind of bad people, and I've never, I've never been in trouble. You know, I have a wife and two kids, and those are my world, and that's all I really need. I work in the medical field, and I help people for a living, so I didn't come here to be untruthful or, or try to deceive anybody or anything. I just misunderstood that question.
I just want to add, my husband approached me about this business opportunity, and the reason why I'm in support of this is, one, I'm a, I'm a registered nurse. I have my master's, and I'm currently in school for my NP and my doctoral. And I believe that medical marijuana or medical cannabis helps a lot of people with opioid addiction. I currently treat a lot of cancer patients where I work, not necessarily, we don't allow smoking, of course, but cannabis comes in different forms, as you may know, like oils and vapors, but I see a lot of families destroyed by narcotics. And my husband probably wouldn't mention this, but my brother-in-law is a paraplegic and is suffering with opioid addiction. And I wish that maybe he would have tried some medical marijuana, and that would have helped his pain and suffering, but he's too far down in this, this path that he can't come back out of it. So I just wanted to also mention that, on top of looking at this question, because it was a little confusing when I first read it as well, I consulted a friend who is a police officer, and he had mentioned that this is a common question in the law enforcement applications. Given that we don't, we're not in law enforcement, it may not become, it's not lame in terms for us. I can understand how it is for the person who's writing this questionnaire, but this questionnaire clearly is a little bit ambiguous, ambiguous for us. My only suggestion is, is that maybe the, the Calaveras Sheriff's County Department revise the questionnaire so it's more, more basic with yes-no questions if they want to know exactly what they're getting out of their applicants. That's all. Thank you.
Okay. Any further comments from you guys? From the appellate?
No, 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 sir. Thank you.
Okay. So, so now we have presentations by the members of the public, and they'll be limited to five minutes. Any public members wish to have a presentation on this item?
I don't have a presentation, but I think we recommend that you approve the applicant's request, but go a little further, instruct county council to work with the sheriff to make clear the definition of requirement regarding convictions, arrests, so that the same mistake wouldn't occur again. Also, it would seem like convictions of a crime ought to be the disqualifying requirement rather than an arrest, or an accusation for that matter. The, if there's a history, if the person has a history of maybe many arrests and no convictions, perhaps there might be evidence right there that the person wouldn't qualify. But it needs to be clear so that the same mistake doesn't happen again. This process is not supposed to be oppressive, and the sheriff is on record many times over favoring a ban of marijuana, and so it's possible that, that his enforcement of this ordinance is influenced by those convictions. But in any case, I think our county council should work with him to make sure this doesn't happen again and approve the applicant's request. Thank you.
Any other public comments here? Okay, so you have another chance to speak up before we move on to, back to the staff. So the applicant, appellate?
Yeah. I just wanted to mention that I've been compliant with everything. I've paid every single fee that been asked of me, from cultivation fee, building permit fees, the public work fees. I also paid for the water board fees and also registered with the state. So I'm, I'm here to follow every rule and regulation you guys ask of me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Moving back to the staff, please.
Anything else? Nothing else to add?
So I, I just want to clarify, this was denied because of the specific background check that the sheriff's department?
Right. So what we've been seeing is disqualifications on two different areas. One, if you, if they find through the background check that you have been convicted of a misdemeanor or felony somehow related to, you know, drugs, whatever, they can, the sheriff's office can make that determination to disqualify you. The other disqualifications that we've seen have been those that have failed to complete the questionnaire accurately. So in this case, you know, in, in the eyes of the sheriff's office, Mr. Amin failed to disclose an arrest. Although the arrest didn't result in anything, you know, there was no conviction, they see that as a failure to complete and be honest with the questionnaire. So we've been seeing denials on both sides. One, disqualification because of actual felonies and misdemeanors, and two, disqualifications for failure to complete the questionnaire accurately. But everything thus far, his application is, this would be one through verification on-site, through the site inspection. What we see in his packet today, he would probably be one of those that would get a registration of, a certificate of registration, which is that final document.
Question for county council?
Originally, when we talked about background checks, the board gave direction, gave sheriff's support to look at a specific area of the background check. I know when the form came out, there were many more questions on that form that was at, you know, that was my understanding that, that was the board's direction. I see this is in section two of the application, where it's listing arrests, et cetera. Section one deals more with what? We don't have that in our packet. Can somebody clarify what section one of the background check is asking for?
Oh, hang on.
Because I believe it was section one is more or less what the board was wanting and passed in our urgency ordinance, but when the application came back, we've got section two and three and so on.
Section two, section three.
Section one, the background questionnaire.
I think is, oh, it's personal information.
Yes, it's, it's personal information that was part of the packet, and it's on page 473 of the overall board, board.
Packet.
Item, that, board packet item, yeah.
It just asks for basic information, such as your name, aliases that you've used, physical address, mailing address, telephone, email, date of birth, height, weight, social security number, other addresses that you might have lived on.
Section one, then. Okay, then section two is dealing with?
The questions, the clearance questions.
And we were interested in development of the urgency ordinance related to convictions, if I recall?
Correct.
Not necessarily arrests and other things, more or less what the final outcome was by court.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions from the board?
Mr. Chair, I have a question. Question of Mr. Amin. Mr. Amin, did you actually complete your application, or did you have assistance from somebody, counsel, your wife?
Me and my wife completed the application.
Okay. Did you thoroughly read through it?
During that process, the, the submission date for all the application was short, so we were scrambling to get everything together. To be honest, the last thing I thought I had to worry about was the background check because I knew that I didn't have any record or anything that would withhold me. So I was more worried about being in compliance with everything on the operation as far as, you know, 75 feet back from property line and all that stuff. So I was more worried more on that stuff than the background check because I knew that my background was clean, and I didn't have anything that would withhold me from that.
Do you remember specifically reading a couple of sections? One, applying to reporting any arrests with or without disposition. Do you remember reading that on the application?
I read the term disposition, and I read the question. I did.
Did you understand it? I understand that you were confused when you answered that. Is that correct?
Absolutely. And even till this day, when I look up the definition of disposition, I go back and revert to that question, and I don't know how that question enters that sentence as far as what it's asking me to do. To me, I just figured in my mind that I don't have a conviction or any misdemeanors or felonies, and so that's how I went about it, and that's how I answered it. And honestly, that's the one portion that I didn't go over with my wife because I figured I'm clean, I'm going to pass this, no problem. And so I didn't go over that with her. But the rest of the application, me and her went over it together.
Do you recall reading a section regarding perjury, regarding answers to an application on that form?
Perjury?
Was there, was there a section that applies to perjury, giving false information on this application? Do you remember that?
No, sir.
Okay. Did you actually sign the form yourself?
I did sign the form myself.
And did you know that there's an acknowledgement, if there is or not, of understanding all the information that you're providing and the questions being asked?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I have no further questions.
All right. Any other questions from the board?
Now, our, our urgency ordinance did not lay out the questions on the questionnaire, correct? Those were developed by the sheriff?
That is correct. The questionnaire was developed by the sheriff's office, and I just want to clarify that the board is clear. There has been discussion about the background check and the process for the background check, and under the urgency ordinance, that's required under 1795.16518. But I wanted to remind the board that the background check is not the basis that is for the board. The basis is section 1795.170, and that, and that indicates that cannabis registration may be invalidated by the planning director for the following reasons. Four specifically says that the application for registration contained false or misleading information. So the issue for the board is whether the information on the background check form rises to false or misleading information for purposes of section 1795.170.
Thank you, counsel.
Okay. But the false or misleading information would be in response to the questionnaire devised by law enforcement?
Correct.
And we did not instruct them on how to do that?
Correct.
Okay, what did we instruct the sheriff in our, without me going back and reading it and looking at it, on our urgency ordinance, when it came to doing these background checks?
Decomplished these urgency orders, like urgency inspections, etc. End eight, end eight.
The ordinance directed the planning director to consider the sheriff's recommendations with regard to background checks. And it was if they had a marijuana-related felony, or a history of fraud, or code compliance issues, or dealing drugs, basically. And so the sheriff could make a recommendation based on arrests and convictions. And in this case, the sheriff has made a recommendation that the application should be denied because he inaccurately filled out the application. So as, as Megan succinctly stated, the question really is whether or not you guys think Mr. Amin deliberately gave false and misleading information. And if he did not, you can grant his appeal. If you think he did, then you should not.
I would still like to know, though, the question on what we asked. Can we answer that?
Do you want to get the actual language of the urgency ordinance?
Yes.
Certainly, I can read that for you. So specifically, what it states is that all applicants for a caregiver medical cannabis cultivation site, or commercial cannabis cultivation site, shall submit fingerprints and be subject to criminal background checks conducted by the Calaveras County Sheriff. The registration may be denied or invalidated if the sheriff finds that the applicant for the cultivation site has been convicted of a felony or misdemeanor he deems to be reasonably related to the qualifications, functions, responsibilities, or duties expected of an applicant for the type of registration he or she is applying for.
So it speaks specifically to conviction. Thank you.
Any other board comments?
All right, so we have served by a member of the public. Anybody in the public wishes to comment on this further? No? Okay. So I'm going to close the appeal hearing and bring it back to the board for discussion. So the appeal hearing is now closed, and bring it back to the board for discussion.
Well, I acknowledge what the sheriff is looking at, and I understand to where there's, for lack of a better word, a misunderstanding about arrests, formal charges, et cetera. You know, the urgency ordinance was pursued based on convictions, and so I have a difficult time with this particular situation because I don't see any convictions listed here. And an arrest is one thing. I, I have some concerns with the form as well. I don't think it's clear. I think it's asking for a lot of information that was not directed during the urgency ordinance period, and I'm in support of granting Mr. Amin's appeal.
Anyone else wish to comment? Okay, can I have a motion now?
I make a motion to grant the appeal to Mr. Amin.
I have a motion by Supervisor Ponte. Do I have a second? All right, so, dies for lack of sex. So I need another motions.
Mr. Chair? My move that we deny the appeal of Mr. Amin, based on the evidence presented to the plenary commission and to this board.
Okay, I have a motion to deny the appeal by Supervisor Alomero. Do I have a second?
A second.
A second by Supervisor Kearney. All in favor?
Aye.
Close?
No.
Three-two. So the appeal hearing on that one is over. Can we move on to the next one, please?
Moving to item fifteen of the Planning Department, uphold the planning commission's denial of two thousand sixteen dash one zero eight-one Dickinson commercial cannabis registration appeal.
Good morning, board. If you'd just give me one moment for this to warm up. Good morning, Darcy Galart with the Planning Department. Before you this morning is an appeal by Stephen Dickinson on behalf of Twenty Farms regarding the denial of commercial cannabis registration application. The project site is located at twenty-three eighty-five Wagner Road and Railroad Flat. It's approximately two and a half acres, and the appellant also owns the adjacent parcel where he has another cultivation operation. The various reasons why this application was denied by the planning director were due to inaccurate photographic evidence. The photos that were submitted with the cultivation registration application were actually for the adjacent parcel. The second reason was that the receipts that were submitted with the initial application included names of an individual that was not associated with the registration application in any manner. Therefore, staff could not connect that the supplies that were purchased by those receipts were for the actual cultivation site. And the third reason was due to a lack of evidence to support the requested sixteen-thousand-three-hundred-and-fifty-five square feet of cultivation area. On the screen before you is an aerial image of the site where cultivation was depicted to occur in the registration application information. This image is actually dated June tenth of this year, and this is the aerial imagery that the county flew over, and at that time, it fails to support any cultivation that might have occurred on the site totaling sixteen-thousand-three-hundred-and-fifty-five square feet. There is potential, once we measured it out, that possibly it could have been about six-thousand square feet of cultivation site in that particular area. The receipts that were submitted, March and April receipts, were for supplies such as wood, for construction of a fence. The gentleman's name that showed on the receipt, it came about that he had established accounts and he knew the appellant, and therefore it was easier for him to just purchase items underneath that gentleman's name because he already had those accounts established. And then one of the other receipts that was submitted, was submitted for the other adjacent registration site as well. So the appellant provided some supplemental information for the planning commission to consider, and that's what you're going to see in these next few photographs. So this was information they submitted after they had filed their appeal with the planning commission. It was presented to the commission at the meeting. So there's a photograph showing some grading photographs that were dated April nineteenth and May fourth, showing some plants in the ground on the site. And the claim that the appellant made at the hearing was that the registrant was directed to change his square footage to the maximum allowable for the ordinance and the application on, and that the forms were a little misleading, and that it stated that you could apply for a maximum versus what you actually were cultivating. He claims that his original estimate is ten thousand five hundred square feet, although the application again showed sixteen thousand three hundred and fifty-five. And he stated that he would be willing to agree to a cultivation site anywhere between six to eight thousand square feet. After taking the public testimony and listening to the appellant and his legal counsel, the planning commission's findings for denial of the appeal were as follows. They stated that there was no confusion in the ordinance, that it's very clear in terms of what someone should be asking for regarding the maximum allowable canopy on a site. The registrant had registered for a mixed light operation, which what you would assume you would see something such as a hoop house on the project site, or a greenhouse, and there's no evidence of a mixed light operation on this particular site. There were some additional receipts and photographs that were provided, and the commission stated that these items that were received could not be considered into the record because all evidence should have been submitted by June thirtieth. So I wanted to provide for you the most current aerial image that we have to date. This is dated sometime between late August, early September. So you can see now what appears to be some rows of plants. You can also see off what appears to be maybe some newer plants in the ground. It looks like a little bit of rows off to, we'll just call it the northeast part of the project site. So that grading and those plants, if you look at the June tenth aerial image, are not there. So I'm talking about, I wish I had my pointer, I'm so sorry. It looks like a green vegetation area, and if I scroll back, it now looks like it's been graded. Looks like there might be some rows of plants planted there. So there's a difference between the June tenth aerial versus the August, September aerial as well. Therefore, based upon all the information we have, staff is still recommending denial of the appeal, upholding the planning commission's denial. The appellant did submit some supplemental information on October third, which is part of your packet. It should be noted that the information that's in there, that's contained in Exhibit A of that supplemental information, is information the planning commission saw. Everything else that's in there, photographs and receipts, the planning commission were not presented with that information, so they did not see that as part of their consideration. It's my understanding that the appellant's legal staff has a PowerPoint presentation to give as well, if the board would like to consider seeing that. That concludes my presentation, and I can answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from the board?
Not at this time, but I reserve the right to, if I will, question both parties in this manner. After hearing the other presentation, request a small break.
Right now?
Mr. Chair, ten thirty?
Sure. All right, so we're going to take a five-minute break. So let us continue with the presentation by the appellant.
Mr. Chair, I have a small request. Counsel?
Yes, sir.
Do you remind the board that we are to hear evidence that was presented to the planning commission, and the additional evidence should not be considered at this time, is that correct?
The appeal before the board is to consider any and all evidence that was in front of the planning commission.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning. My name is Roy Stanley. I'm the attorney for Stephen Dickinson and the Twenty Farms Collective, and we're going to talk about appeal number two thousand sixteen-two-two-four. We had a little technical difficulty, so we're not going to have the audio visual, but we're going to do it old school, we're going to do it on paper, okay? We've gone through some of this already, and we, the applicant owns a large parcel that actually had, a large piece of property has two parcels on it. One is twenty-three sixty-four Wagner Road, the other is twenty-three eighty-five Wagner Road. This particular appeal concerns twenty-three eighty-five Wagner Road. He does have and successfully registered a commercial cannabis operation at the twenty-three sixty-four parcel, and these things were done at the same time. Some of the elements of the property are shared. You'll hear about a shared fence that surrounds the perimeter of the property, which is one of the reasons why there's duplicate receipts and stuff of that nature. So they actually bought this property in two thousand thirteen and began to prepare for cultivation in two thousand fifteen, late two thousand fifteen. Some of the preparation included upgrading the existing facilities and certain shared property elements, fixing some of the small houses that's on the property. All of those things are commensurate with being in compliance with the medical cannabis registration ordinance. If we go to number three, as Darcy told you, there was a denial of this particular application. There were three specific reasons listed, and those reasons were, there were some duplicate photographs, the receipts listed the name of a person associated with the application, and the application listed a cultivation area larger than the area shown on the aerial photographs. I want to step back a little bit and explain why we approached the planning commission in the manner that we did. We understood from the ordinance that it was, it seemed to us they needed supplementary information to either clear up some of the discrepancies or to corroborate what we were saying in the application. And so much of the planning commission appeal was concerned with giving that commission more information as to what Mr. Dickinson had going on on the property and the operation he was doing. What we did not address specifically at that time was the actual application and the sufficiency of the evidence in that application. And we're going to go through some of that today, and we believe that the application itself actually contained everything that he needed to be registered. Moving on to page four, there is a due process issue here. At the planning commission, it was stated that they weren't allowed to accept any other evidence. We disagree with that. We believe that the planning commission, in their charter on the ordinance for the appeal, specifically says that the planning commission and the applicant or the person appealing should present all relevant and known facts to the planning department staff and planning commission. So looking at the ordinance, our belief was they want us to bring all the information that we have in regards to this particular application, if there's more receipts, if there's more clarifying photographs, and our belief was that that information would be looked at in terms of its actual substance and whether or not it proved that Mr. Dickinson's application actually, that he actually had the operation that he had on his property. But that was not done, none of that evidence was even considered, and it was basically denied on the basis that they couldn't look at anything else that was on the application. But I want to talk specifically about the application itself. Our technical difficulties are going to make it a little difficult to see some of the pictures and things, so we do have larger photographs you can look at. But I want to go specifically into the application itself. And if we look at, I'm going to go to page, I'm going to see if the page six, just for time. I want to look at specifically each cause for denial. The first was that there was, as Darcy said, there was another person's name listed on some, on the receipts. The receipts were submitted, there were two receipts submitted. There's actually a picture of those receipts on your slide, I believe it's number six. And there's a name, Lawrence, it's Lawrence Rangel. He's actually Mr. Dickinson's neighbor, and as she explained, he has a contractor account at a number of different supply stores, and they, they're neighbors, they eat together, they hang out together, they build their farms together, so they were working on these things at the same time. And if they needed wood, or they needed planting materials, or soil, or whatever, they would, you know, just call the particular store and say, hey, order on Lawrence's account, we'll come pick it up. And Mr. Dickinson would pay with his American Express, or pay with cash, whatever was necessary. One of the things that she said was that there's nothing linking these receipts to his farm, and that actually is not true. Although they do say Mr. Rangel's name on the top, if you look at the bottom of the hydroponic receipt, it actually has a note that lists the address of the property. Now, you can't see it because your slide is too small, so I do have a copy of that in larger form, and if you allow me just to pass it around. This is actually the application received from planning. She sent it to me, and it's stamped with the date and everything. This is not something that we made up last night. May we approach? So what you'll see is a receipt from Murphy's Hydroponics for some garden materials and supplies, and while it does say Mr. Rangel's name on the top of the receipt, simply because of the contractor account issue, what you'll also see at the bottom of the receipt, it says notes, and it says twenty-three eighty-five Wagner Road. So, you know, if we go into the actual ordinance, what does the ordinance say about those receipts? The ordinance says, "Date-stamped receipts for equipment and supplies in types and quantities commensurate with commercial cannabis cultivation in the area proposed to be cultivated." It doesn't say there, you have to have the applicant's name stamped on the top of it. It doesn't say there that the registrant has to be connected. All it says is, has to be date-stamped, which it is. It has to refer to medical cannabis cultivation, which it does, and that it has some connection to the area to be cultivated, which on the very bottom of the receipt, it says it right there. It says the address. There's no more connection you need to that property than the address. So looking at that receipt, while it does say Mr. Rangel's name, and we explained why that is, it's only because they were working on these things together, and they would call down to the store and say, hey, put it on Lawrence's account, we'll come pick it up. When they get there, the, the store was keen enough to ask them, where's this going? And they put the, and they put the address down. So we, so we disagree that this particular receipt is not connected to the property in question. And it's sufficient, as per the ordinance, to show that those supplies were used on the property. So that's, that's reason one for the denial that we disagree with. And we also, just so you know, in your appeal packet, we have pictures of that particular equipment on the site. Now, the pictures were taken after the deadline, obviously, because we didn't know this was going to come up, but we took the pictures to show that's, that's what the stuff is. The second thing, the second point we want to, we want to address is, and you can turn the page. We want to address is, and you can turn to page seven, is the sufficiency of the evidence in regards to the photographs. And we admit that the applicant, he attached the same photographs on both applications. And there's an easy explanation why. When he originally went to apply and register his operation, he was gonna do it as one operation. There is no dividing fence or anything between the properties, it's all his. When he got to the planning department, they told him, "Hey, you have to split this up, it's parcel by parcel." So, when he did that, he just erroneously attached the same photographs. Those photographs, the timestamp photographs, they are of the same hoop houses or whatever it may be, but I want to draw your attention to one thing. Inadvertently, in a sense, he actually attached a photograph that shows the grading prior to May 10th. If you look on your slide number seven, which it's a picture, and it's actually stamped, received June 20th, but it's a picture from the application that you have that you're passing around. It's the picture, it's his actual plot map that he drew, but that plot map actually shows the grading, the initial grading of the cultivation space. So, while it's not timestamped, it is a photograph of the cultivation area, and it shows the initial tier of the grading. If you actually... We actually went, and it's right... You know, he has a drawing there, he shows the garden, and it's right on the edge of those trees, you can see the grading. If you go to slide eight in your packet, we took a Google Earth image of just recent... I think it's the same one that she showed, and you can see that same grading area with plants planted on it. So, it's the very same area with the taxi application. The only thing we're missing is a timestamp. The question then is, well, when was that picture taken? How can we corroborate or verify when that picture was taken? Well, we would ask that we're able to submit supplemental information to show that, and if you look at slide nine, as part of our planning commission appeal, we submitted that information that showed the very same tier graded with plants in it, and those are dated... There's two pictures of the initial grading on March, I believe, March 6th, and then it shows plants in the ground in April. So, we know that if these were taken March 6th and April, I believe, 19th, that the Google Earth image had to be prior to March 6th. So, that appears to be sufficient to show that that operation was actually occurring. And I want to step back a little bit, just talk about the ordinance itself. The ordinance, from my understanding, is that you guys made that ordinance to protect the residents of the county, who had these particular operations in existence. Mr. Dickinson is one of those people. He's been... He's had that property for three years, he didn't just come in last week, and he's trying to do everything he can to comply with the ordinance. Specifically, looking at the application, the first two points are the receipts. I think we have a pretty good case that those receipts show the connection to the property. And the second is a photograph of the cultivation operation, and it had that. It was a timestamp, and we admit that, but we asked for a little leniency and allow us to put supplemental information that shows what that time would be. The last point is a little bit more complex, I guess I'd say. If you go to page 10, there appeared to be an issue with the square footage of the cultivation area, and this is where it... We don't really have a full explanation as to why this happened. On his application, it does say 16,335 square feet. However, as I told you, he originally wanted to do one application for the whole thing. He split it up into two. His original number was somewhere in the 6,000 to 8,000 range, I believe. What happened was, when he went to turn it in, the clerk informed him that you should put the maximum amount of square footage allowable by your property. If you look at the picture on your slide number 10, it's a picture of the actual application, and you can see where the clerk whited out his number, wrote in the number herself initially. So, he, in good faith, believed that he was getting advice from the planning department on what you should do, how you should proceed. If we had the electronics, it would be colored, and you can see, it's different handwriting, it's a different color. It's actually, you can tell it's whited out, but you can see the elements of the original number above it, and the clerk actually initialed it. We don't know why she did that, but we don't know what exactly that was to show, but it clearly shows now that it was her advice that he was following, even in her own handwriting, as to what number it should be. He doesn't dispute, at this point, what measurements the county has taken since that time, and his understanding now is, it should have been the area that it was at the time, but that wasn't the advice he was given, and he believed the advice in good faith. He wasn't... He didn't allow her to do that to... In some nefarious way to, you know, try to get a bigger area than he was allowed. He believed what she said, he believed that it was the right way to do it, and this is actually... It's part of the packet that you have up there, and it's part of the application, you can see it. They have a colored copy in the planning department that shows that he didn't put that number down. So, looking back on the denial, there's three reasons for the denial, and I think we have a pretty good case on all three, that there should be some supplementary information here. It seems... One of the issues that we have is that if we go back to the receipts, the reason for the denial of the receipts is not something that's listed in the ordinance. There's no... There's nothing in this ordinance that says you have to have the name of the person on top of the receipt, or the name of the person all over the receipt, or anything like that. It says you have to have a connection. You have to have... You have to show it's for commercial cannabis suppliers or whatever it may be, and that's exactly what it shows. To deny it or to have that as a reason for denial is a violation of due process in a strict sense, simply because it's an arbitrary denial. There's no... There's no way, there's no criteria listed that we could say, "Okay, well, this is what... It should be like this, we should have this name or that name." It's nothing. It's a totally different category of denial. If it had said, "Hey, there's no address," or "There's no... This is not for cannabis, this is for, you know, this is a wheelbarrow for something else," that's a different story. That's not... That's not what the denial was for, for that particular point. So, the same for the... In terms of the pictures, while we agree that there's no timestamp on that picture, that picture shows the cultivation. Mr. Dickinson was doing all he could to comply or substantially comply with the ordinance as written, as far as he understood it. Maybe he got some bad advice or didn't fully understand what the department clerks were telling him, but we don't feel he should be punished for that, and just with the acceptance of the supplementary information, it shows everything that he puts on the application, it shows it in plain sight. He's got the right pictures, he's got the sign stamps, he's got everything, and we submitted that to the planning commission, and they refused to look at it. In terms of the square footage, as you can see, you'll see on the application, he was taking the advice of the planning department. Why should he be punished if that's the advice whoever was working there doled out? Why should he be punished for taking it? It would seem, if he was to say, "I'm not gonna do that, I'm gonna do something else," it would be more cause for denial, because he'd say, "Well, Tony, do this, I'll do something different," and it was just plain wrong. He followed their advice. So, in terms of square footage, he's willing to accept what the county's measurements are, there's no issue with that. That specifically addresses the application, and our argument here is that the application, as submitted, is sufficient. Everything is there. It may require a little bit further inspection, it may require a magnifying glass or some very small print, but everything is there. In addition, we did, if you go to page 12 of your packet, we did give a little bit more context to some of the receipts that we added at the planning commission. We showed the fence, it's a shared fence. Darcy talked about the receipts were submitted on... Same receipts submitted at the planning commission were on the other parcel. Well, that's because the fence that they built, and you'll see it in the picture on the right of your packet on page 12, the fence surrounds the entire property. There's a road, Liberty Hill Road runs on the backside of the property. The fence goes from the 2385 parcel all the way around to, I believe it's Wagner Road on the front, all the way around the whole property. So, both parcels are using that, those supplies, and as you guys know, it's a requirement that you have a fence or something to shield the cultivation operation from public view. And that's exactly what you did, that's why the fence is there. Prior to this stuff, there's no reason to have a fence. We also included, and there's in any appeal packet, there's a litany of receipts and different things and pictures, but we just wanted to highlight some of them. One of the things he did, he repaired the groundwater well. On the application itself, it says they're gonna use groundwater to water the plants and provide irrigation, and he invested some money into repairing that groundwater. In addition, he also bought a large, it was a five... 110... 1100 gallon tank to hold the water, to water the plants. That tank was bought in February of 2016. We just wanted to show the receipt that corresponds to the picture, and show you the picture of the tank that's on the property. And just for context, this tank actually sits right next to the residence, which is on this particular parcel. Slide 15 is simply more of the garden supplies. There's receipts attached to our appeal letter, appeal letter. Those particular receipts correspond to these particular supplies in use on that garden in that space. We have the potted bags, we have the drip lines, different cages and things they use to actually build the garden. To a conclusion, we ask for this particular remedy. We ask that the board supervisors take a closer look at the application itself and allow a minor amount of supplemental information to give greater context to what exactly was meant by... Was meant on the application. And we ask that you appeal, that you grant his appeal, and that you approve his registration. In the event that you can't make that decision based on supplemental information, we ask that you remand this back to the planning commission and direct them to look at all the information as stated in the ordinance that speaks of their appeal power. Mr. Dickinson's here today, and we're willing to answer any questions that you may have.
Mr. Dickinson, would you like to make further comments on your case?
What was that?
Would you like to make further comments?
I just would like to say that, like you said, I've been here for three years. I didn't come to do this. I like this place, I like the people here, and it's a good place, and this is an opportunity I take care of my grandfather with Alzheimer's for like the last 10 years, so this really... This is an opportunity for me to do stuff, because that's actually what he does for his Alzheimer's and stuff, and it helps him. But I just want to say that I appreciate you guys taking this into consideration, and that's about it.
Thank you. Presentations by members of the public? Any presentations by members of the public? So, we have a rebuttal from the public participation there, I guess. So, you have that opportunity for any more rebuttal against the appeal, or for the appeal.
I'm good.
So, we got staff, summation of rebuttal.
I just have a few things I'd like to sort of touch on based upon the information that was provided. The plot map that was shown on... Let's see here. I numbered my pages. Number eight, Mr. Stanley stated that you can see some grading. I'm taking a look at the two photos side by side, the Google Earth image and the plot map, based upon where the house is located. It's... I will agree, it's kind of hard to tell in the photos, but I'm not seeing the extent of grading that showed in the June 26th Google aerial image as opposed to what's shown on the plot map Google aerial image, so... And there's no date, so it's hard to tell if this is a 2014 plot plan image from Google Earth, but I'm not seeing that grading that's shown on there, that you can see on the one side by side. You know, receipts aside, the applicant registered for a mixed light operation. There isn't any evidence that was submitted in the application that shows that they had a mixed light operation on that particular piece of property. The photographs that were submitted were unfortunately submitted for the adjacent site. Photographs were not provided by that June 30th date for the actual project site that we're looking at. So, there's... Again, going back to that deadline, is they were required to submit that evidence by June 30th. The photographs that you see before you today that they've submitted as part of their supplemental information, sure, there's plants that are in pots, there's photographs that aren't date-stamped. I don't know when those photographs were taken. I can go back to the information that staff had based upon the June 10th aerial imagery that we had, that did not show proof that there was that extensive amount of cultivation occurring on the site, as opposed to what you now see in that August/September aerial imagery, which shows some cultivation on the site. When those plants were put in, I can't tell you, but I can only estimate sometime between June and August from what I can see on those images. Furthermore, there seems to be... In fact, I'm a little confused in terms of square footage of what they're asking for. Mr. Stanley stated that originally, when the applicant came in, he was gonna do one application, split it into two, that the original number was 6,000 to 8,000, it was whited out, now it shows 16,000, but they're willing to accept 10,000. So, I'm not sure exactly what's being cultivated, what was originally cultivated on the site, or what the site was prepped for in terms of grading. I cannot speak to, in terms of the whiting out and what was the original number on there. What I can tell you from the over 700 applications that we took in, there were many times that I sat at a table in Department One, and I asked registrants, "You've put down 22,000 square feet, is that what you're cultivating, or is that what you want to do?" And a lot of times, we did ask for permission. "Okay, if you're only truly prepped and cultivating for 10,000, we're gonna white it out, and we're gonna change it." So, I can't speak to what that original number was on the application. It clearly does say that it's now 16,000, and it was whited out, but what that number was underneath, I don't know. I don't know if it was 10,500, and I don't know if it was 6,000 to 8,000, but it sounds like, from the conversation we just heard, that it might have been 6,000 to 8,000, but he's willing to consider 10,500. So, maybe some clarification on that would be appropriate. The only other thing is, I would like some clarification on the fencing. It would appear from the photographs that there is fencing only in certain areas, but the ordinance does require that your entire cultivation site be fenced and secured, so I'm not sure if this site currently... If the board were to grant the appeal and allow the registration to move forward, if that site is fully secured. And just in closing, in terms of staff, is that the planning commission did make it very clear that the evidence that was presented to them after that June 30th date was not evidence that was submitted by the deadline, and therefore, they were not gonna consider any supplemental information that was provided by the appellant, and their decision was based upon what was submitted in the registration packet that met the June 30th deadline.
Any questions by the board, the staff?
They get a chance to answer that question.
When we get to it?
Mr. Chair, I have a question. Are the original photographs available in the file that we can take a look at? We have a black and white copy here. Item number two, in reference to the clerk who whited out the square footage and put the initials, is that clerk present? Is that you?
That is not myself.
I'm sorry, what's that?
That is not me.
Is that clerk present?
Not in this room. Um, not in this room, but is here at the county.
Okay. She is, she or he is available for talking to?
We could certainly grab her, yes. Can you grab the original file, the two-two-four? Two-two-four, I don't have that one.
And, Mr. Chair, I do have questions of Mr. Dickinson, but I'll reserve that until after conference.
Yeah, just wanna get all the questions out, uh, anything to staff, so that we have a full, full spectrum of, uh, you know, uh, answers.
Well, I have a couple of questions, mostly the county council.
Those are the one, those are the images that were, that were submitted with the application.
Correct. What's being passed right now are the images that were submitted with the, um, original application. I pulled those from the planning commission staff report, which is attached to your, um, packet.
Were those digital photos, do you know?
No, they were, um, a hard copy photo that we'd been scanning.
Made from digital photos or negative photos?
Probably, because it has the, that's how they get the time date stamp that's on there.
So probably digital or, or negative?
Probably digital, and then they printed them out.
All right, thank you.
If I may address, I do have, uh, a copy of the application on the computer that you can see, so if they don't show that we have it in, in code.
So, as far as the, uh, question on due process and what the planning commission, um, can hear or receive as far as new evidence goes, um, can you clarify that for me a little bit more?
Yes. Um, under section seventeen ninety oh seven oh, which is the procedures for appeals, um, it indicates that, it does indicate that all relevant and no facts must be presented to the planning department staff and the planning commission. Um, all of that evidence was presented to the planning commission, um, and it's my understanding that they can hear it and they can take it under submission and apply it as they feel appropriate and necessary. Um, it's my understanding that, um, their basis was because it was not, that it did not meet the deadline within the urgency ordinance, wherein that the urgency ordinance specifically, um, says that, um, a complete application needs to be submitted pursuant to this chapter by June thirtieth. Um, so, for purposes of an appeal, yes, the planning commission should receive and consider any, uh, any evidence before them.
And then, so that, uh, I'm just, just talking it out so I can understand it better. Um, so, basically, if I'm hearing you correctly, the, they submitted all of this evidence, or almost all of this evidence at the planning commission level, then the planning commission said, well, you didn't submit it by the deadline according to the urgency ordinance, therefore we're not going to consider that evidence, uh, because the ordinance says that you had to have it in before. Is that correct?
Because they did not meet the deadline in the urgency ordinance.
Right. And so, um, and so if we, as a board, um, said, well, we'd like you to consider that evidence, um, could we do that?
Certainly.
Send it back, like, like you suggested, move it back to planning, which said, look, we think, uh, you made a mistake here, we want you to look at this evidence, uh, that you, that you didn't look at.
Certainly, if there is new and compelling evidence that you feel the planning commission did not consider and would like the planning commission to consider, you can remand it back to the planning commission for another or new hearing.
Mm-hmm.
My understanding is that that information was presented to them, and they, um, and they found that although it was, this additional evidence was presented, it still did not meet the requirement of the urgency ordinance to provide a complete application as of June thirtieth.
And, uh, but, and we cannot consider that because the planning commission made that decision?
I'm sorry?
We can't consider that evidence because the planning commission did not?
You can consider any evidence in front of you that was presented to the planning commission.
Even if they said that?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Now, did I hear, um, before you take off with that meter, um, that there's another parcel under the same applicant, and some of these receipts were used in their proof?
Correct. So, applying? What we found was one of the receipts, um, and without going through the files, but there was one that was also submitted as a receipt on the adjacent parcel, which Mr. Dickinson has a registration application for. I think the explanation we received was that he purchased supplies for both properties, um, you know, under one receipt.
So why would the receipts even be an issue on this one, I guess, if you might?
So in this particular one, initially, the receipts that were submitted were not enough to tie it to this particular property. Subsequent to that, supplemental information that has been received could tie those purchases to this particular property, but the planning commission, um, stated that that was information that was submitted after the June thirtieth deadline, and therefore it wasn't information they were gonna consider.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chair, one question. Question of counsel. You mentioned that you had provided some receipts after. Can you identify that in your presentation, what you said?
So, it wasn't in the presentation?
Hang on a second.
Was it? Okay.
We're, we're, we're talking to staff, our staff, right now, only, and then we will get to, we will get to them, okay?
Mr. Chairman, there was a request that, uh, the staff person that had taken in the application, uh, be present to, um, answer any questions that she might have about remembering the, unfortunately, she's not in the office right now, I don't know where she is, she may be at lunch.
Okay, thank you for drawing, Mr. Mauer.
We, I do have the, the files, uh, someone requested to look at the original photographs.
I, I would like to see the original photos. Thank you, sir. Anybody else like to see on the board? Thank you.
Okay, supervisor Oliver, are you finished with your questions to staff?
I am.
So if you'd like to, go ahead and question the opponent, that'd be good.
Okay, uh, counsel?
Yes, sir.
I recall you mentioned receipts that you have submitted, and once, once again, repeat my question. Those receipts after the planning commission hearing are not contained in your presentation pack, is that correct?
No, they're pretty voluminous, so I didn't wanna give you guys a sixty-page presentation. Um, with the original appeal letter, we attached a number of exhibits, and we had receipts and pictures, uh, more than what's in the presentation. We just pulled off selected ones so that you could see that they tied in.
So, would it be safe to assume that the receipts contained in your presentation were submitted with the original application?
Yes. Well, no, no, um, one of them, one of them was, one of them was presented to the, to the planning commission. The receipt that you have there was submitted originally on the other parcel for the wood.
Could you identify that for me, please?
Excuse me?
Could you identify that receipt?
So, um, at the planning commission level, we submitted additional receipts. One of those receipts was the receipt for the lumber that she mentioned was on both of the applications. Um, so, those receipts are included in the appeal, but they were not a part of the original application for this parcel.
Is that the receipts from Lowell? Do you know, it's identified in your presentation?
Um, the receipts from Rangle, Lawrence Rangle, that's, uh, those are, of Lowell's,
I'm looking at receipts, uh, and I don't have page numbers, unfortunately. Investment in the grow operation facility tank purchase, there's a receipt there?
Yes.
Is that, was that presented with the original packet?
No. So, we had, so I can, I can back up and give you a better view of it. We had three submissions, in essence. We had the original application, which had the two receipts that had Mr. Rangle's name on it, and, uh, there actually is a stamp on your packet received. We have a second submission that was in response to the denial, that gave more information addressing those issues, um, and that's, that was the second submission. The third submission was, we just full bore gave you guys everything that we had, uh, such a package. And so, as part of the third submission, the planning commission receipts were included as well as an exhibit to the appeal to the board supervisors.
Thank you, counsel. Chair, I have a question for Mr. Dixon.
Go ahead.
Mr. Dixon, thank you for coming. Uh-huh. And is it Dixon or?
Dickinson.
Dickinson, I'm sorry. The receipt referenced in the presentation packet provided by your counsel indicates, and, excuse me, I'm getting a little over the top. Uh, apparently it's, uh, some type of material delivered by dump truck, and it has the name of Lawrence on the customer. Could you explain the relationship between Lawrence?
Yep.
And whether or not that was signed for by Lawrence or by you or?
Uh, no, it wasn't, uh, I just picked it up. It wasn't signed for by Lawrence, but, um, uh, as far as Lawrence goes, he's my neighbor up there. Um, he just moved up there about a year ago. I've been there for about three years, so, uh, he's doing the same thing, and we got material, I got material for him, he got material for me, you know, picking it up. So, and that's how we did it, because obviously we're trying to build it and get material and everything, and, and we had that deadline, so we were in a hurry to try to get it, get it done.
Dude, what is Lawrence's last name?
Rangle is his last name, yeah.
Okay. Did Mr. Lawrence have an established account with this vendor?
Yes, uh-huh.
Were you authorized to sign on that account?
Uh, he authorizes over the phone, I just picked it up.
You just drove the truck?
Yeah, yep.
Okay, all right. Do you have any financial agreement with Mr. Lawrence about any cultivation activity?
No, he's just my neighbor.
Or any properties or?
No.
You're just friends?
Yep, he's just my neighbor, actually.
And did, this material was for your particular operation, correct?
It was, yes.
Did you use all of it for this particular parcel?
Uh, yes, the lumber, there was a receipt of lumber, uh, that was used for the fence, so that fence is, does span both properties. In the picture, you can see the shadow from the fence, how it goes across, um...
I'm talking about the receipt from Murphy's?
Hydroponics, yeah, that was for that property, two-three-eight-five, yes.
And it was, that wasn't for lumber, though, was it?
No, it wasn't, uh-huh.
What was that for?
I believe it was drip lines, uh, there could have been soil, I mean, we bought a lot of stuff, cages, uh, all kinds of stuff, tubing.
That was solely for your property?
Yes, uh-huh.
Your operation, not my Lawrence's.
That's right, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
No, that's quite, thank you, Chair.
Any other questions from the board?
Can I ask staff a question?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, now, the, the ordinance is going, the ordinance not is going, the ordinance states that you have to have a completed application in by June thirtieth. It's rhetorical, correct?
Correct.
Okay, if, if they had their application in, but there were inconsistencies that were responded to when staff met with them, would you consider that they had their application in and it was completed? When, when was the whiteout done on this, I guess, is one of the things?
I'm going to assume that was done at the intake of the registration application.
Before June thirtieth?
Correct.
So are you willing to assume they had a, a completed application in by June thirtieth?
I would state that they had an application in by June thirtieth, but we were not doing completeness checks when we took them in. We were ensuring that they had receipts, they had photographs, they had deeds or whatever else they needed, but we were not doing a full verification process at check-in.
I'm a little confused on why we would deny the second property with the, the receipts being a consideration and not the first property.
Um, I can't answer that question. I did not process the denial of this, um, but they, for one reason or another, this application was, um, brought forward for review, and at the time, the planner looked at it and determined that the receipts were not accurate for this site, that there was no cultivation, um, and that the square footage didn't match.
With regard to the, um, the, the receipts, when we reviewed it first, it appeared that the receipts all applied to the adjacent property, and that's why we rejected this one, denied this application, because we could not tie the cultivation activity that they claimed were, was happening on the property and the investment that was made in that property to that property, uh, based on the information that we had, uh, that was submitted prior to June thirtieth. So that was the reason for denial. Peter Mauer for the record, for planning department.
Um, so, in a, when you deal with other applications, uh, for like subdivisions or, you know, the permits, um, and somebody comes in, submits their permit, and it's not complete, which happens often, I would imagine, um, is there a timeline that you need to complete the application in?
The normal process for a development proposal is, uh, we have thirty days to review the application for completeness. If it's incomplete, we had, we notify the applicant, and they have whatever time they need to, uh, to make it complete. Uh, there is a, well, I think they have a hundred, a hundred and twenty days to respond. If they don't, we consider the application abandoned. Uh, this is a different situation in that, you know, this is, uh, identifying sort of after the fact. Uh, this was an urgency ordinance that was adopted, the, um, the boards are understanding the intent of the board, uh, in adopting that, was they were to freeze things, what was occurring on May tenth, uh, and so we're trying to look at what documentation could they provide that predated the May tenth, um, decision to allow whatever people had invested in to continue their operation, um, and not allow new cultivation to occur until we had a permanent ordinance in place. And so, when the applicants, um, and not just this applicant, but all the applicants submitted their application, we had to base our decisions on what they had provided to us, uh, in their best effort to demonstrate that they were indeed cultivating on that piece of property, they had made an investment, uh, and we use whatever resources we had available to make that determination. So it's a little different situation when you're sort of looking at something that is going to occur in the future as compared to the things that occurred prior to May tenth.
So, um, if you complete, if you go into the planning department or, and, and you complete an application for any other, uh, um, project, you have this thirty-day window to, to complete, uh, you turn in your application, the planning department says, well, you didn't submit photos, or you didn't submit the, uh, right deed, or whatever it is, and you send back a letter to the applicant saying, this is incomplete, but you stopped the timeline, right, as far as the amount of time that you need to process, uh, the permit in, correct?
Yes, but there's no deadline for submission. The ordinance had a clear deadline, you must submit the application information by June thirtieth.
But what I'm getting at is, the process that normally works is like, I'm gonna do this, here's my paperwork, and you say, no, your paperwork's incomplete, we need stuff back from you.
Right.
And you need to do it within a certain amount of time.
That's correct.
And so, now we've decided that we're gonna not do that, um, like how we treat all the other permits that we do, we're gonna do something different. And so if you have not submitted all of your paperwork correctly, by the time the thirtieth June rolls around, you're out of luck, is what we're saying. Um, and that is, doesn't seem to be a fair process, um, to me, because if... Because you have to take it out of the fact that it's cannabis and marijuana, and you have to take it as any other project. Because that's what this is, it's a project that we're looking at. And so, you need to have the applicant, the property owner, who is in, fully intending to apply by our laws that we've set up, applies, and the fact that they're not completely done with their permit, or they've forgotten something, goes contrary to everything else we've always done. And to not then, at the planning commission level, where you have the opportunity to bring and appeal that decision, to say, well, you already have failed, because the 30th has already passed. So, you've set up an appeal process that is impossible to win. Because, right, I mean, because there's no, if you didn't turn that information in by the 30th.
Well, the registration process is unique to all the other, different than all the other processes we have in the department. No other, the urgency ordinance established a deadline to submit the information. No other application process we have has a deadline that is required to submit. And so, that's what we're basing our action on, was the information that was submitted by the applicant by that deadline date.
And that makes a lot of sense for the planning department, and I understand that. But what I'm saying is that there needs to be a chance to, for the applicant to say, no, wait, you know, we have that information, we just didn't put the right, you know, photo in there. And there's no chance for them to do that. Because the planning department, I mean, the planning commission is not allowing any submittals after June 30th. So, there's no real appeal going, process that's going on right now. Because you guys have, rightfully so, decided that June 30th is what the urgency ordinance is, that's it.
Right.
So, I don't, I don't see how there's an appeals process at all for this, for that particular part of the thing. Because you have the applicant, the property owner doesn't have the chance to say, no, we're actually complete, we just, you know, that fell out of the file, or that, you know, whatever circumstance it was, they can't then defend themselves. There's no, there's no process to do that. Is there, I mean?
I think that the appeal process, if they can demonstrate that the information they provided did show that they were cultivating.
Right.
But it's the submittal of new information that we and the planning commission have struggled with.
Right, and that's the, but that's the crux, right? The new information, like if you forgot to submit something, or you didn't submit something, that's it. There's, there's no appeal to say, well, wait, we have that information, we just didn't put it in the packet. I mean, I don't see how that's.
I guess it's incumbent upon the applicant to make sure they submitted everything that they needed to demonstrate that.
Right, but any other process that we have is not set up like that. Why is it not set up like that? Because it's not a fair process, right? I mean, if you have an incomplete application, you come in and you're denied because it's incomplete, and you appeal it to the, to the planning commission, they say, no, we wouldn't be able, we'd do nothing in this county if that was the process we used.
Well, and like I said, the process is different, because there was a deadline for submittal. There is no deadline for submittal on any other application.
But how do you get around that point if there's, if there's actually information that proves their application is indeed completed by June 30th, they just didn't have that one piece of evidence? That seems like to me the point where the planning commission exists and say, oh, yeah, you know, you're right. That should be submitted. But the planning commission, as far as I can tell, is just saying, no, June 30th is the deadline. And that, and we are not accepting any others, evidence to come in past June 30th if it wasn't in the application, that's what they're saying, right?
That's correct, that's what they're saying.
So, how is it an appeals process? Go ahead.
The appeal process is laid out for all applications for Title 17. The urgency ordinance is the urgency ordinance, and the board did it place in, on May 10th. Everyone, all applicants, all registrants knew when the board adopted the urgency ordinance that there was a deadline to have a complete application submitted by June 30th. So, there was in fact a time period between May 10th and June 30th, wherein there was a potential time for, had they come in earlier, for staff to review it and correct it before June 30th. Unfortunately, because everyone waited until the last week, staff did not have time to vet, vet applications for completeness prior to that June 30th date. But ultimately, the burden is on the registrant, on the applicant, to meet these requirements.
And to be fair, this wasn't submitted, and this was one of the earlier registrations, but we simply did not have time to review any of these, because we were so overwhelmed by the response to submittals.
Right, and so to me, it seems like we should have in place that the planning commission accepts that evidence. Because there was no time, there was no time for, like you just submitted, there was no time for that to be, to be worked out.
Certainly, the board has the ability, if you feel that the evidence presented today is significant, you have the ability to remand it back to the planning commission to consider it with direction that if an application was submitted by the June 30th deadline, that the planning commission and planning staff can review and consider additional or new supplementary evidence to meet the requirements of the urgency ordinance that was not submitted with the application. That is something that the board has the authority to do, if you feel that the evidence presented is significant and you feel that the planning commission should consider that prior to making, making a decision.
I think it's important, because otherwise, we're going to hear, this is going to be the same plan over and over again.
I just want to remind the board that this is more than just the receipts. This is also about the first prong of the test, which is under A or B. If you recall, applicants have to, have to, have to meet or provide evidence under 1795165N3. They have to, they have to either meet A or, A and, A or B, and one of the other prongs of the test. So, the other issue is whether there was date stamped photographic evidence of grading and/or earth moving commensurate with the area proposed to be cultivated. So, or date stamped photograph evidence of cultivation commensurate with the area proposed to be cultivated. If you recall, the board, the purpose of this requirement was so we would register grows that were there, not allow for expand, expansion of grows or new grows. So, it was, so somebody who had a 10,000 square foot grow couldn't expand it to a larger square footage, if you recall, that was in the record in, when we adopted the urgency ordinance.
Yeah, and just to be clear, it's my, it's not, I'm not as concerned about the specifics of this one case here. What I'm concerned is that the planning commission is not even hearing, or is not allowing the submission of additional evidence because of the June 30th deadline. And that puts us, I think, in a bind up here, and where we could resolve this issue in a more fair and equitable way at the planning commission level if we directed them to look at new evidence that came in after June 30th. Because that's what I think appeal process is for, is to give the applicant a chance to say, no, look, we really were doing this. Because right now, we're like, no, you weren't doing it, sorry. And so, it just seems like the planning commission should be taking a look at it without that arbitrary, it's not an arbitrary deadline, it makes sense. But now that they're hearing the appeal, it also makes sense to get to the truth of the matter. Were they doing these things before the deadline that we set, right? Not, did they submit all the right paperwork? And so, I think the planning commission should look at that. That's what I would like the board to direct them to do. What do you think, Cliff?
I think that we have an ordinance that we opened up applications from between May 10th and June 30th. And people came in to do that, there was a lot of people that delayed their action. And there were some people that didn't, some people jumped right on it, they were prepared, they were ready. Wasn't like, it was, wasn't like it was a brand-new thing happening. So, I think that we need to stick to our ordinance, and we will so.
And you don't think the planning commission should even take a look at those, that evidence?
I think the evidence, the application is between June, or May 10th and June 30th is the application provided.
I have a question, you know, part of this application process, and I don't want to get too far off on this particular application we have before us, but part of the application process is that we also had the extension until September 7th for more application justifications to be submitted, or?
There were four specific items that we knew would not be available by June 30th. So, we provided until September 7th, and they were the seller's permit from the Board of Equalization, the county business license, the registration with the Secretary of State, if you're a corporation or a business entity, and submittal of the notice of intent and a receipt from that, or some documentation from the water board that they had filed the appropriate paperwork with that. Those are the only four items that were allowed to be submitted after that. And we're sort of facing some of the same issues with applicants that did not meet that deadline as well.
Okay. And then, did this applicant pay the fee?
Yes.
Okay. So, Chris, I see, I understand where you're coming from. Because it is a new process, and there's a lot of information, a lot of clarification, a lot of, you know, information that needs to go into these kinds of decisions. But it was created as an urgency ordinance to kind of put a brake on, you know, whether you want to call it the land rusher or not. And we had to start with something. And we knew that something was not going to be the perfect scenario. So, you know, I stand behind the urgency ordinance and the deadlines that we establish. I, I totally understand where you're coming from, because I think it's, again, it's a cumbersome process, and it's a cumbersome application. And there's still rules to be defined as we move forward. So, I'm hopeful that with the permanent ordinance, a lot of these kinds of things can be flushed out, be more specific, and be able to better define those rules. But in this case, it was defined as the urgency ordinance to have something in place, because prior to that, we had nothing in place, and it was really willy-nilly at that point. So, understand what you're saying, support with what you're saying. And I think those ideas can be pursued as we look at the permanent ordinance down the line. So, for this, I want a clarification, that this was a deadline issue of June 30th, having the proper documentation in place. It was found that the documentation wasn't proper. And so, there's no, the planning commission didn't look at anything besides the June 30th date. So, what was on June 30th? I understand the applicant had two parcels, some confusion perhaps about how to register the two parcels. But, you know, I look at that as part of the registrant needing to totally understand, seek advice, whether it's from an attorney, whether it's from, you know, the alliance or whatever it might be, to help sort through this application process, to, to understand it and to do it correctly.
All right, so, so we have, are we finished asking staff questions? May I have a seat brought by members of the public? Anybody in the public wish to talk about this?
Michael Falby, Mountain Ranch. I'm sure everybody in this room, everybody on the board, everybody here has faced deadlines in their life, you know, drop-dead deadlines. And looking for excuses to ignore said deadlines is not a good argument to me. Supervisor Pawnee touched on it. You know, there's deadlines that we all have to adhere to. Thank you.
Any other public comments?
Al Segala, Taxpayer Association. I think we concur with, with Chris. This process is supposed to be regulatory, not suppressive. If the purpose of this ordinance is to suppress marijuana cultivation by finding, by putting tripwires to encourage failure in the process, then we've turned government upside down. We're doing something wrong. We're violating property rights. Constitution doesn't permit that. So, we have to go back to fundamentals. If we find that there was an error in the application which was corrected, in this case, and in all cases similar, you need to go by the truth. The truth is, the spear of the law is more important than the letter of the law. I don't know, I don't know how you can excuse two other than that.
Any other public comments? All right, so I'm going to close the appeal hearing at this point. What?
I wonder if there was an opportunity for us to remark on the question that staff had, and some issues we're discussing here in relation to the process itself.
You know, I, I went through that, that process, and it wasn't any time, there wasn't any comments at the time. So, I'll go ahead and let you do that.
I just want to start with, as Mr. Wright said, you know, this is, it's a due process issue. It's one of the foundational elements of our country, is due process. Before you deprive anybody of life, liberty, or property, or use of property in this way, you have to have due process at all. If you have an appeal procedure in which no information can be submitted, you don't have an appeal. And that's, that's one of the issues, is that, we agree with it, is deadlines May 10th. Well, if we have information that shows prior to May 10th, these things were happening, how do we not have an opportunity to present it on an, on an appeal basis? You know, everything in this country that we do, you have an opportunity to appeal, everything. This is the one process where hard deadline is done. We've all had that under this group. But every deadline, you have an appeal. And that appeal, you're allowed to give information, you're allowed to have reconsideration. You would have no Supreme Court, you'd have none of that if everything was a strict deadline. It doesn't work that way. That's all we're asking. We're asking to review the evidence that we have. If, if you need more pictures from before May 10th, we have pictures from before May 10th. The issue here is not, for us, is not that we don't have the evidence. It was simply that when we submitted it, there were some clerical errors in the application. And before we even knew about the errors, we had no opportunity to submit any more information. So, the appeal is basically a rubber stamp of whatever the planning director decided, because there's no more evidence you can present. And that, that in and of itself is unjust and unfair. And it appears that we should be able to at least have the discussion, and at least have the evidence reviewed to say, hey, if the pictures were, well, all of your pictures are after June 30th, so you're, you're out, fine, that's no problem. But if we have pictures from April 15th, those pictures should be at least reviewed to at least try to corroborate or verify the information. Specifically, you know, the, the information that we submitted to the planning commission was specific to the denial. And it appeared they were requesting more information. But if they weren't, I don't, what was the point of the appeal? Because they said, you have these issues with your application, address them. Well, we addressed them, and it said, well, we can't take any more information. Well, in what circumstance would an appeal ever be granted? The other thing is, you know, you talk about the urgency ordinance, and you guys did hard work getting that done, and we appreciate it. But one of the, one of the things is, you have to look at the law itself. There is no provision in that ordinance that abates the appeal procedure. And you don't lay out a separate appeal procedure that says, only for this ordinance, we're going to have this separate process, and you understand what this process is at the outset. Our understanding is that we go by the same appeal process that every other decision is in this county. Our understanding is that we go by the same appeal process that every other decision is in this county, in terms of the planning commission. It's laid out, it says, you are to present all this evidence and bring it all to our attention. But it, it appears that you're creating another process without any ordinance or anything that actually says that that's what you're supposed to do. It doesn't say in that, in your, in your urgent, emergency ordinance that no information will be allowed after this date. It just says you have to have your application in. What if you misspell your name? Too bad, so sad, you don't have any opportunity to correct it. That's just, it, it's just not the way things are, things are supposed to be done. You know, if, if, we would be more comfortable with that, with, with the tenor of this argument, if the ordinance said, the appeal procedures laid out in section, I think it's 17, council?
17987.
Those, those appeal pro, that's a bait for this process, but it doesn't say that. And that would give you the indication that, okay, there's no appeal here. Or the appeal procedures that you know and you've used before, they don't apply. So you better get everything, I's dotted, T's crossed, everything perfect because you don't have an opportunity to, to correct it. Some of the issues brought up by staff, we do have information that we can give you to show the fence surrounds the entire property. But we wouldn't know you needed that until you gave us an opportunity, until you told us that you needed it. So even if we had information right now to address that issue, we have no opportunity to present it. If there are clarifying things that need to be done, there's no opportunity for us to give any information to do that if you're not gonna accept supplemental information after June 30th. And in addition, staff brought up some additional causes for denial that were not listed on the original appeal in terms of the mixed livelihoods of nature. That wasn't listed on the original denial. And I don't believe that you can, in the course of the appeal, bring up new reasons for denial that we have no opportunity to address. And even, I mean, the planning director admitted, well, even if they did get it in on the first day, we wouldn't have the application process to tell you you had, you had a problem, so you could resubmit it by the June 30th deadline. So what are we to do? We, we, Mr. Dickinson has substantially complied, he is trying his best to get everything in. He's not a land grabber who came in here in May and is trying to start something up real quick. He's been here for three years, owns a property in, in a fee simple. He's paid all the fees, all the taxes, everything you've asked him to do. And he's, all he's asking you for is opportunity to correct some clerical errors, that's it. Some minor things that the evidence is right there. If you look at all the evidence, there's no way you deny it, because it's all right there. Thank you.
Chair, I would like to address some of the issues that were brought up by, by council, specifically about due process and the appeal process. I want to make sure that the board is clear, and we've had discussions in prior appeals about this, is that, that this is a de novo here. So the board has to consider any evidence presented to it independently from what the, the planning commission did. You don't give deference to the planning commission or the planning commission's decision. You have to weigh the, the evidence in front of the board independently. And so, that is the reason why the, the appeal process is set out the way that it is, where all evidence is to be presented to the planning commission at the appeal hearing. Because then any, that, that is the evidence that is, that the board is to consider. We've had prior discussions about new evidence that was not presented at the planning commission hearing or the planning department. That, in that situation, that is when the board remanded it back to the planning commission. In this situation, all of the evidence that was presented to the planning commission is in the record and is, is evidence that the board can consider when making its ruling and determining whether the evidence presented to you meets, meets all of the standards and whether you want to approve or deny the appeal. So there isn't a due process issue because ultimately, the board has all of the evidence that is, that was in front of the planning commission and you would, regardless of what the planning commission did or said, you have to weigh that evidence independently from the planning commission. So I just want to make sure that the board is aware that you are to weigh all evidence in front of you and determine whether, whether you want to approve or deny this appeal. The issue about remanding it back to the planning commission, if you feel that all of this evidence is significant and, and you feel that direction to the planning commission to consider and weigh all of it and direct them not just for this appeal, for all, for all future appeals, to consider any evidence presented to them as long as they met the submission of an application by the June 30th deadline, that is certainly within your prerogative. But again, for purposes of today's hearing, all of the evidence is in the record, board has the ability to weigh all of the evidence that was presented to the planning commission and, and come to a conclusion independent from the planning commission.
All right, so I am going to now close the appeal hearing, and we'll bring it back to the board for discussion. Appeal hearing is closed. More discussion? To me, this is a message of what we're saying to our planning commission and how to review these going forward. It's a controversial code at best. Some people in the county are not happy with it, some are happy with it. But we owe it to the 700 applicants to interpret it rigidly. And we owe it to the people who do not like this to interpret it rigidly. The appeal, I could, I could maybe approve an appeal if I felt the planning commission had made mistakes on their judgment. I don't feel that they've made mistakes on their judgment. We have deadlines, this is not the same as other applications that might come through, and I believe we need to stick with them. Any other comments?
All good.
Debbie?
No.
Okay, I have, I have just one comment. I, I don't believe the regulations. I believe that the county gave an opportunity for people to sign up on a specific time period between May 10th and June 30th. And it was made, it was made very clear that they must follow the ordinance. The application, bottom of the first page of the application says, applicant or landowner is applicable, shall, as applicable, shall notify planning department in writing within 72 hours of any change to the information described above. And I know that for, you know, many people, the urgency ordinance may have been confusing, confusing to them, right? But it is in place, and it's something that it was brought to action. And I feel that we need to follow it. Because, and hopefully, we can get to a point where we move on with this process and get to a final ordinance eventually. But right now, it is the urgency ordinance. And so, I know also that there were other applicants that filed on time, they got their information in on time and they were complete. And so, as nice as Mr. Dickinson is, I, you know, I think he's an honorable guy, it's unfortunate that he didn't, in my opinion, have all the information needed to be able to qualify for this. So, that's how I feel about it right now. So can I have a motion, please?
I move to uphold the planning commission's denial of 2016-1081 Dickinson commercial cannabis registration appeal.
I'll second.
So a motion by Supervisor Kearney?
Chair.
Yes.
For the record, I just want to clarify, I want to clarify for the record that you have reviewed and considered all of the evidence presented to you in today's hearing. This is presented through the planning department, the planning commission, and in front of the board today.
Very thoroughly.
Yes.
That was pretty obvious today, so.
Just wanted to clarify to the record.
All right, and so I have a motion by Supervisor Kearney, a second by Supervisor Ponte, all in favor?
Aye.
Are you opposed?
No.
Thank you.
Chair, do you want to take a five-minute break from the round?
Yeah, let's take a 10-minute break, how's that? How about, how about this, how about we go to lunch? It's 12 o'clock, and so let's be back at 1 o'clock, okay?